Mr. Chairman, we're live.
Okay, welcome back, everybody. Today is Monday, October 16th. We're in our afternoon session. Our next agenda item is an action item. This is a public hearing for Resolution 2024-01, the Valley County Comp Plan Amendment to Adopt Impact Fees. But this time, I will, before I open up the public hearing, I guess there's really no concern about him.
May I clarify?
Yeah.
That's Resolution 2024-01, adopt amendments to the Valley County Comprehensive Plan to include impact fees.
Well.
And along with a public hearing for ordinance number 2024-01, development impact fees. So we're going to have one public hearing, Comprehensive Plan Amendment Motion First and Ordinance Second.
Okay. So at this time, I don't, do I need to ask for ex parte or conflict? There's none of that involved at this, is there?
I would ask.
Okay. But this time, I'll ask my fellow commissioners, do you have any ex parte or conflict of interest?
I do not.
I do not.
I do not either. So at this time, I'll turn it over to staff and see where this one goes.
Okay.
And then, do you have your microphone on? Green light on? Have to hold it for a minute until it comes on?
Does that work?
Yes.
Okay.
I can hear you.
You hear me?
Okay.
So the staff report for Valley County Comprehensive Plan Amendments to Include impact fees and then the ordinance adoption. Cascade, Donley, McCall, Fire Districts have requested a public hearing for an amendment of the Valley County Comprehensive Plan. The Commission will make a recommendation to the Board of County -- oh, that's the P and Z one. Anyway, I'm going to punt this one then. So we are doing, the Valley County Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval on August 17th, 2023, of amendments to the Valley County Comprehensive Plan and also amendments to the Valley County ordinances. Potentially affected agencies were notified for this public hearing on September 8th. The notice was sent on September 8th to libraries and post offices in Cascade, Donley, McCall, and Yellow Pine. It was posted on the Valley County website on September 8th. A notice of combined public hearings was sent to the Star News on September 21st, September 28th, and October 5th to be published in each of those newspapers. Potentially affected agencies were notified on September 12th. The notice was sent on September 12th to libraries, post offices, Cascade, Donley, McCall, and Yellow Pine. It posted on their notice boards. It was also posted on the Valley County website and at the entrances to the meeting rooms on September 11th. And we have received no responses. And what we're doing is the Commission made a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners regarding an amendment to the Valley County Comprehensive Plan to assure that new development pays for its own impacts on facilities, utilities, and services. And that's an amendment to Chapter 11, Goal 2, Objective 3, that provides for inclusion of the Cascade Rural Fire Protection District Impact Fee Study and Capital Improvement Plan Final Report dated June 2nd, 2022, as Appendix B. Donley Rural Fire Protection District Impact Fee Study and Capital Improvement Final Report dated June 2023, as Appendix C. And the McCall Fire Protection District Impact Fee Study and Capital Improvement Plan Final Report, June 2022, is Appendix D. And so that, Resolution 2024-01, for your signature, makes that reference in Chapter 11, Goal 2, Objective 3. And then we'll append each of those capital improvement to the comp plan. And then the second part of the public hearing is ordinance 2024-01. And this is all of the stuff that is new to our Valley County Code as Title 14, titled Development Impact Fees, as provided by legal counsel of the fire departments.
You said that was Title 14?
Title 14, Chapter 1. It's a new chapter for us. And it looks, you should have a copy. It looks like this.
Yeah, I'm trying to find it. Only 97 pages here.
It provides the title definitions, CIPs, development impact, advisory committees, capital improvement plans. The entire list is provided in your staff for reporting. I noticed.
Hey, any questions for staff? Mr. Geekery, I see you're online. Is there anything you want to add to this discussion? You're muted. You are muted, sir. Can you unmute?
My apologies.
There you go.
Now I'm unmuted, I think.
Oh.
I, I don't have anything. I want to thank the clerk and all of the commissioners and you folks for coordinating this meeting. And so you can go through all these public hearings at this time with all of the boards present. The two hearings involving the new fee and the capital improvement plan, their boards will join you with that. And then, of course, the ordinance and the amendment of your comp plan is a combined hearing run by yourself because you folks are the only one with jurisdiction over the ordinance and the amendment of your comprehensive plan. And I hope, I assume the boards of the fire districts have convened their meetings as well. They're supposed to.
Um, I think so.
No, we have not opened up those meetings yet.
Oh, that's after this, isn't it?
No, they would be participating in your, the hearings involving the new fee and the capital improvement plan. And the reason I'm having them, particularly with the new fee, is, you know, we have that statute that says when you do a new fee, you're supposed to have a hearing. And I understand and the argument in my view would be that since that fee is established by your ordinance, it is the county's fee. But I could see someone making an argument, no, it's a fire district fee and you didn't have a hearing. And, you know, you just, I just want to avoid any potential arguments and have to go to court and wait for a judge to decide. So that's kind of trying to be overly cautious.
Yeah, this is a Valley County impact fee, not a fire district fee.
Yeah, I agree. I just think if they participate in the hearing, if somebody challenges these fees, our boards are going to be responsible for defending the action. And I just want to eliminate the potential of someone making that argument and then we having to go to court on a declaratory judgment action and try to assure that a court would see it our way. By them participating, that argument can't be made.
So the public hearing right now is on the amendment to the Valley County Comprehensive Plan and adoption of Title 14 for the impact fees in the ordinance.
Right, and they don't participate in that, I agree. I'm sorry, I'm a little late. When I clicked on Douglas's email to, and then accept the invite, somehow my email threw this whole thing into trash. I had to recapture it. So that's why I'm a little late.
Tell us how to do that for our future meetings, will you?
Okay. So then, at this time, if there's no more questions for staff, I will open up the public hearing. And we will take testimony of those that are proponents, then uncommitted, and then opponents. You're allowed three minutes. Try not to go over the three minutes. And then we'll, if there's any questions or conversation after that, then we'll close the public hearing and bring it back for deliberation. So at this time, I'm going to open it up for testimony of those in favor of this adoption of impact fees. Anyone in the audience? Go ahead, sir, come to the mic. Say your name and the town you live in, please.
My name is James Stewart. I'm a resident of Cascade. I'm also a physician. And I'd like to speak in favor that the commissioners adopt the impact fee and related ordinances. Rapid response in the case of a heart attack is extremely important. It's best within three to five minutes. Our current response time is more like nine minutes. And so it's very important that we have adequate response vehicles and facilities to take care of these problems. Secondly, as a resident of Cascade, it's only fair that the county outside of the city share on the costs of these improvements. And so I think, I hope you adopt the resolutions.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
My name is Joel O'Kinsey. I reside in Donley off of West Mountain Road. And I just want to concur and agree with what was just previously stated. And I am 100% for the impact fee and change to the Title 14, Chapter 1 amendment.
Thank you, Joel. Anyone else? Last call for proponents. Hey, we're going to move on. Anybody that is uncommitted, doesn't feel one way or the other? Please let the record show there was none. So now we'll take testimony of those folks that are opposed to this. Last call, anyone opposed to this? Please let the record show there was none. So at this time, I will close the public hearing and we'll come back for deliberations. At 1, Doug, 117, I guess. And what's your feeling?
I think this is what we've been discussing as a way in order to mitigate some of the impacts of development in our area and to allow proper funding for our EMS services as we move forward. So I'm fully in favor of changing the comp plan and adding this fee ordinance.
In the same way, I mirror what Commissioner Moppen says, that anything we can help in this county to make our services better, it's got to happen. People aren't moving away from here, they're moving here. And we need everything we can do to help our first responders and the people in this county.
Anything else we're missing? So then I'm going to go ahead and make the motion that we approve Resolution 21.
Close your public hearing.
Huh?
You need to close your public hearing.
I did.
Oh, you did, okay.
I closed at 117.
117, that's true.
Okay.
Thanks for keeping us in line.
That's okay.
Thanks for keeping us in line.
I forgot what I was doing.
You were making a motion.
That we approve Resolution 2024-01, to the Valley County Comp Plan Amendment to Adopt Impact Fees. Do I have a second?
A second.
Who didn't second it? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, now our next public hearing is the ordinance to enforce this amendment.
Mr. Chairman, that's not to start till 1:30, so we'll probably.
Nope, no.
Just the ordinance.
You just had a public hearing for both of them. So go ahead and make a motion for 2024-01.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt ordinance 2024-01, the impact fee ordinance.
Second. Can we get everything in there, send it, you need?
Hey, what page was that?
And this is going to be Title 14, Chapter 1, a whole new chapter in the ordinance, correct?
Well, that's in the comp plan, correct?
No, the comp plan is just a inclusion and the ordinance is a whole new title.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks for the clarification.
And Title 9, subreddit or Title 10. This is Title 14, Development Impact Fee, right after recreation.
Thank you.
And on page 65 of your mail out kind of explains what that title will look like. Authority, ability, the findings, purpose, definitions, which go on and on and on, which you have to have. And then the advisory committee. We didn't talk about committee membership, committee charges, organization of the committee, capital improvement plans. I think everybody's probably had a chance to see this. Is there any questions on that? So you made the motion, we have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I think we all three of us signed this, don't we, Cindy?
So I have two documents to sign.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair? That's kind of.
Sorry. I apologize.
It's okay.
Mr. Chairman.
The madam on the chair, I think that's what I heard.
Yeah, what's up?
There's also, for your consideration, a notice of published summary of this ordinance, which will be a lot less expensive than publishing this 26-page ordinance. And under the law that governs county approvals of notice of published summary, you have to approve that notice of published summary. And then the clerk is authorized to issue a statement along with it. And then it can be published in lieu of publishing the entire ordinance.
I have that here for your.
Can I see, because I can't find it here.
I think it was right at the very end. I was just on it before I went back.
That's the part that needs to be done.
Okay. Okay, okay, yeah, I got it. So this is basically a short version of what we just did to build the ordinance. And this is ordinance 20.
24-01. And then clerk signs that.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we approve the notice and published summary for Valley County Ordinance 2024-01.
A second.
Who didn't second it? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, what this does is allow Doug to print it in the paper, only not 69 pages, but a summary. Okay, we got a motion second, oh, do we vote?
Not yet.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
So here's the comp plan again. Do you want to do that?
Please. And today is the 16th.
And I believe that one needs to be notarized.
Um.
Or this one. There a notary right behind that?
Yeah. Sorry, you need a notary, Doug. Please thank you.
Do you want to wait till after all this public hearing stuff? And here's the, one to the ordinance.
Need a notary too? I can go ahead and sign this one?
I would sign that, please.
This doesn't have October. This is adopted this day, 2023.
Just put, and slash this.
I hope they don't have a fire anywhere right now. Exactly. Extra support staff right now.
And then Doug signs that.
And there's nothing else for us to sign here? Doug signs that. Okay. Okay.
I was going to do this later, but after, your other two motions, the summary.
Hey, Casey, come on up. We haven't signed this yet, but notary page is two pages back.
Okay.
So we'll sign it and then we'll hand it to you. While you guys are doing that, break, I'll be right back.
20, 24.
That's the one.
She's read one. We'll record them too. Thank you. Ma'am, I might need you back and just later this afternoon, if that's okay. Thank you.
I brought this clock in case anybody got worried. Juan didn't even smile at that one. Asleep. I don't want to step in the middle of it so that he doesn't hear anything that's being said, so.
Okay. He's got him a new flag hanging behind his desk.
Okay. I'm definitely going to need some help. So Bill, can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can.
Will you kind of walk us through what we're doing today?
Um, since I kind of got into this late, just you conducted the public hearings for the amendment of your comp plan and for the ordinance. Am I correct?
Yes, yes.
So then have you conducted the public hearings on the new fee and the approval of the, the capital improvement plans of the three districts? There, and the way the law reads a development impact fee, you have to approve the capital improvement plans in addition to amending your comprehensive plan, which seems redundant to me, but that's what the law provides. So that's what the other hearings would be. So if anybody has any concerns with the capital improvement plans or they have any concerns about the new fees, then you would have a public hearing to take any testimony in that regard. And then, this is the hearings that the fire districts, I would recommend that they join in. Then they would hold any action that they would take until you folks have finished. And then later in this meeting, you can consider your resolution approving the capital improvement plan. And the resolution with regards to the intergovernmental agreement, there is no requirement in the law to have a public hearing on the intergovernmental agreements. And so that's why that has not been noticed for public hearing. And there are, of course, three intergovernmental agreements.
So the draft joint meeting agenda is the meeting you're talking about? Are all three districts are here?
Yes, sir.
We've got to open up hearing one and do it, and then open up hearing two and do it. So I think we have to do the call that we're.
Well, if I get out of line, just slot me a little bit and let me know I'm screwing up, okay?
You're running the meeting, sir. You won't get out of line, and I certainly won't call you on that.
Well, it's okay if you feel up to it. So at this time, this being the place, I'm going to open up the public hearing. This is a draft joint meeting agenda notice for commissioners and fire district commissioners. Call to order, open session, the county commissioner, roll call. I can, I think we're all here. That can be pretty well established. Received meeting posting, the public hearing publication reports from the county clerk, is that you, Doug?
Mr. Chairman, I would just report that the meeting has been posted on the Valley County website as well as in the Star News. And that's the, from the county's perspective, on the posting of this public hearing scheduled for today.
Okay. So then next on the agenda is call to order the open session, the Cascade Rural Fire Protection District Board of Commissioners. Do you have commissioners here? Why don't you guys come on up to the table? That way, we kind of know what we're doing here.
You can have the whole room.
And you guys are to deliver the meeting posting of public hearing publication reports?
I think so, because there's two hearings per district.
Right. So do you have any meeting postings or the things you have done in public hearings?
We'll call Donley up here, too.
Not yet.
Not yet.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on our website and in our meeting box, timely, Friday afternoon.
Did you get that, Doug?
Yeah, but I need you to identify yourself.
Oh. Pam, come up to the mic and say your name, please, for the record.
Right here.
Yep.
County Shamo, Secretary Treasurer for Cascade Rural Fire Protection District.
Okay, thank you. So now I'm going to call to order open session, Donley Rural Fire Protection District, right?
Bill, before we move forward, could we ask a clarification from Bill? Bill, each one of these has two hearings involved. So while we have the Cascade board up here, do we do hearing one and two regarding Cascade?
I think you can do them all at once. If the other, if their other boards have just convened their meetings and then you can conduct all these hearings regarding these new fees and the capital improvement plans at one time. I think it'll save time and would be easier to handle rather than going through it three times. But you can do it either way.
There's just three different amounts, so.
So I'm assuming then that I'm going to excuse the Cascade group and bring up the Donley group next.
We just have this out there.
Or you guys could stand up, I guess.
I think just the secretary representing.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
I think if, like, if the board of each, if each fire district's board of commissioners just sits together, like, we can sit up here.
So let's put Donley over here, that'd be great. That's a great idea.
Alls we really need is their secretaries just to report out.
So now I need to receive meeting posting and public hearings from you guys from Donley Rural Fire.
Who was that, sir?
I need to receive meeting posting and public hearing, hearings publication report from your secretary or from you, sir.
Juan Bonilla, Fire Chief, Donley. We posted correctly on Thursday and then reposted after amendments came to the original posting from our district lawyer on Friday. So all postings were made based on the correspondence we're going over today.
Get that, Doug?
Yes, sir.
All right, thanks, sir. And the last one to call to order, the open session is McCall Fire District, Fire Protection District Board of Commissioners. Did you guys, will we see you meeting postings of public hearings, publication reports? I can't see that.
So, so, so the reason he said, Bill said Chair. Who did Chair win the? Because I'm the Chair, but we should call each district to call it, and then receive the notice. And then you have to vote on it. That's opening.
We don't do that all at once together at the end?
No, because each district has to open the meeting and then approve the meeting posting. And then we're going to vote, and then you're going to vote.
And then you guys have to pick somebody as chairman. But it doesn't say here you have to have a meeting and vote. Is that, are we on the right track, Bill?
Yeah, they're, well, what they do is they just approve their own agenda notices. It'll take, go very quickly, I think that's what Chairman Noah's saying. And that's kind of how our agendas work with the fire districts, so they will just entertain a motion to approve the agenda posting like you have. And then as far as the public notice of these hearings, since you published the joint hearings and it's set up, the publication by the county will suffice, in my opinion, for everybody.
Gotcha, gotcha.
So I would just call to order, sorry, my brain's not working out. Call to order the open session of McCall Fire Protection District Board of Commissioners.
Harrison Commissioner, I'm, I'm, except the, ended up posted.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda posted? Is there any discussion? Hearing that, all those opposed, say aye.
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 Did you guys need a second?
Don't need a second when there's four of three.
So Doug, did you get all that? Because this is the record.
And I guess I would ask, are you expecting the county clerk to take the minutes for your meeting?
I would suggest that, you know, you can do it either way, but maybe of each district, you might find out they should be prepared, they could do their own minutes of this meeting.
My feeling is, Doug, I think you should capture everything said today. So we need to know who made the motion, who the second, because we don't have your names for the record, so let's kind of start over again. Say your name, did you got it?
She needs to identify who she is for the record.
So, so I am, I'm the chair of McCall, Sadie, Ella, and, and Harrison, Harrison.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, so then let's move to Donley.
Chair Daniel.
Chair Donley.
I'm Melissa Maney, and I'm, I'm sure making a motion to open the, opening the meeting as well, opening the meeting.
Joint meeting.
Joint meeting. Opening the agenda.
And then you vote. Thank you. Okay, Cascade, you're up.
Okay, Blair Scarborough, Act Commissioner, Chairman for Cascade Rural Fire, we call the special meeting in order. Agenda posting. Dated. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I get your name for the second?
Foxton.
Thank you.
Okay, good, everything, I think we're right on track. So at this time, I would take a motion to authorize the Chairman of the Valley County Commissioners to conduct this meeting. With that, we have a second? Who the second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Now we move into the meat of it.
Thank you, Sadie, for clarity.
Yeah, and what you've just done is you've been given permission to run the hearings, and then you'll run your own meeting for your approvals following the hearings, and then they'll run their meetings to approve their, their items in this meeting, which are after you finish.
Can I cut their wages? No, I better not.
Not if you want to come out to your house.
We're gonna have to check the L2 when it comes through next year.
Okay, so this hearing is to receive comments regarding the County Board of Commissioners and the Cascade Rural Fire District Commissioners, and can I add Donley and McCall into that all at once, you said?
Yes, sir.
What's that, Sadie? Okay, that's what I...
Eight hearings listed, that's why we're questioning it, Bill.
So they have, Bill, they have each hearing listed separately for each district? Are you saying do the hearings combine, amend the agenda, and do the hearings as a combined?
Was it published? Probably not, Sadie.
Sadie, you might have to come to the mic. So Bill, we can put all these together in one meeting, or do we have to have one for each district?
No, you can run them all at the same time.
That's what I thought.
I think it's a lot more efficient, and I can tell you, we've done that time and time again. We did it in Cootney County, Ada County, Canyon County, Fayette County. That's been a procedure we followed where we've had multiple fire districts involved with impact fees.
On top, Sadie, button on top of it, right in the middle, gotta be green, push and hold.
So Bill, just to clarify, you're saying the joint public hearings can be run concurrently?
Yes, ma'am.
And then we each have to split out to do our individual resolutions?
Right, and the county will finish, commissioners will finish their actions first, and then that'll be followed by you folks.
Okay, thank you.
There's an order in that agenda that, that was posted as to which district starts. I think it's Cascade, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, so I, does that make sense?
So I can add, do all three of these MOUs together at the same time?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so for the purpose of entering into a, an intergovernmental agreement by and between Valley County and the Cascade, Donley and McCall Rural Fire Protection Districts for the collection and expending of development impact fees for the fire district systems improvements as identified in the capital improvement plans. Now, I open up a public hearing on that?
No, that's the one you don't have to have a public hearing. The only, you're just having a public hearing at this point on the capital improvement plans of the three fire districts and these new fees, which are listed, as you'll see, in the agenda, so it's, that's what you're doing now, is just having a public hearing on those items.
Okay, so then the second part of this hearing is the adoption of the capital improvement plans for the purpose of entering into this intergovernmental agreement between Valley County for the collection and expending of development impact fees for the fire district systems improvement as identified in the capital improvement plan. Do I actually state the number, the value?
It's in, it was published in the published notice, I think if someone in the audience wants just to speak to these, they want you to state it. You could, but I don't think you're required to.
Well, I think it would be good for public, what's the word I'm looking for?
Transparency.
Transparency to state the numbers. The new fee summary for Cascade is $2,891 per unit, or $1.16 per square foot for non-residential. For Donley Rural Fire, the new fee is $1,796 per unit, or 72 cents per square foot for non-residential. And for McCall, the fee is $1,845 per unit, or 74 cents per square foot. So now do I open up for the public, or anyone in the audience?
I think that would be appropriate.
Okay. So I'm gonna go ahead now and take, open it up for testimony? Yes, sir. Come on up, this is for testimony of proponents first. Go ahead, Mr. Stewart.
My name's James Stewart, I'm a resident of Valley County. I'd like my prior comments from the prior meeting copied and pasted, so I don't reiterate them. I'd also like to serve as a witness that we became aware of this meeting through postings in the Star News, and that notice, notice was adequate.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else in the audience that is proponent? Anyone in the audience that is uncommitted? Please let the record show there was none. Any in the audience that are opponents of this? Please let the record show there was none. So at this time, Bill, now we, we make a motion to accept the capital improvement plans and the MOU?
Well, I think what you do at this time is entertain, entertain a motion to close the public hearing, and then to convene as county commissioners for your deliberation on the specific items, and then we can walk through those.
Okay, okay, so at this time, Doug, it's gonna be 1:44. I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for any discussion. So this is a separate public hearing? Do I have to start over?
No, you're not in a public hearing, you're now in deliberation and, and consideration of the action items.
So I would open it up to comments or questions?
Do they have to vote on each one of theirs?
They'll do it after we vote on ours. They have to do theirs off of us, but I, we already discussed, you know, through the adoption of it in our comp plan, they'll now call it out in our comp plan as, as an approved use in Valley County. Our ordinance states that we'll be in favor of this. I would move that we would approve the adoption of the, what are we, our resolution, oh.
Twenty-four oh-two.
Twenty-four oh-two, resolution twenty-four oh-two.
Is this a resolution approving the capital improvement plans? I think it is, isn't it? Because you, and they're all, three of them are in one resolution.
Right, Cascade, Donley, and McCall, and it is for the Fire Protection District Impact Fee Study and Capital Improvement Plan.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, that's it. Okay, I got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Who the second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now we go on down to authorize, oh, I gotta read this.
That's the intergovernmental agreements resolution. And that, and that resolution approves all three of them.
Mr. Chairman, that would be twenty-four dash zero-three.
Resolution twenty-four dash zero-three.
Seeing that.
Four-three. Okay, so I'm gonna start from the beginning, because it's kind of hard to go right through the middle, to authorize the Chairman of the Board of County Commissioners and the county clerk as the agents of this county to execute the intergovernmental agreements for the collection and expending of development impact fees for each fire district systems improvement as identified in each of their capital improvement plans as follow. Valley County Cascade Rural Fire District Powers of Agreement, Valley County Donley Rural Fire Joint Powers of Agreement, and McCall, Valley County McCall Fire Protection Intergovernmental Agreement and Joint Powers, Joint Powers Agreement for the collection and expenditure of development impact fees for the fire district systems improvement. I am between Valley County and the, and the fire districts as presented. So this would be resolution twenty-two oh-three.
Twenty-four zero.
Twenty-four oh.
Twenty-four oh-three, sorry. To approve this MOU.
Or is it twenty-four oh?
Have to write it in.
At the bottom of four. Have to write it in.
So I would need a motion to approve resolution twenty-two, twenty-four oh-three.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
And moved in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now I adjourn as Chairman of the meeting.
And then you will just recognize and we'll move on to Cascade Rural Fire, because that, since you've already approved your ordinance and you have approved your resolution to amending your comp plan, I think you've completed your business, and thank you.
The Chairman of the County Commissioners relinquishes the chair to the Chairman of the Cascade Rural Fire Protection District for this portion of the joint meeting.
Cascade Rural Fire Protection District consideration of adoption of it, sending for this nerve resolution twenty-four dash oh-one, to approve and adopt Cascade Rural Fire Protection District Impact Fee Study and Capital Improvement Plan, final report dated June 2nd, 2022. Motion to approve.
We move to approve Resolution twenty-four oh-one, including Cascade Rural Fire Protection District, that key study and capital improvement.
Second your motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Resolution twenty-four dash oh-two, to enter into Valley County Cascade Rural Fire Protection District Intergovernmental Agreement and Joint Powers Agreement for the collection and expenditure of development impact fees for fire district system improvements by and between Valley County and Cascade Rural Fire Protection District for the collection and expending of development impact fees for the fire district system improvements and identify in the capital improvement plans.
Motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried. Resolution twenty-four dash oh-three, to approve and adopt Cascade Rural Fire Protection District Valley County Development Impact Fee Policies.
Remove, remove, approve, Resolution twenty-three.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. And that's all the motions for Cascade.
And then read the last line that relinquishes over to Donley.
Okay, the Chairman of Cascade Rural Fire Protection District relinquishes the chair to the Chairman of Donley Rural Fire Protection District for this portion of the joint meeting.
Motion to approve and authorize the Chairman and District.
You may want to have them move to the front, because you've got all the microphones there.
These guys can vacate, you guys come up to the chairs next. I work. Try and pull them in front of you best you can.
Thank you.
Either, you can use this one also.
Okay.
Those are dead already? Okay, thank you.
Ready?
Go ahead.
I'm, make a moving, motion to approve and authorize the Chairman and District Office Administrator to execute on behalf of the Board of Commissioners that certain agreement with Valley County entitled the Valley County Donley Rural Fire Protection District Intergovernmental Agreement and Joint Powers Agreement for the collection and expenditure of development impact fees for fire protection district system improvements.
I'll second. Been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Do you have a resolution number you would like?
Two-zero-two-three-eleven, dash eleven, two-zero-two-three, dash eleven.
Thank you.
You've got also, Madam Chair, you've got the approval of the capital improvement plan on, on the agenda too.
Just the, the top one, right here.
Okay, all right, so this one is Resolution twenty-two-three dash ten, approving the Donley Rural Fire Protection District Impact Fee Study and Capital Improvement Plan Final Report from June 2023.
Remove, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Now you move to the third item. That's the impact fee policy.
Okay, this is Resolution twenty-two-three-eleven, approving and, this one I just did. Okay, I'm Resolution twenty-two-three dash twelve, establishing policy, providing for fire district development impact fee policies inclusive of findings, providing for compliance with the Valley County Development Impact Fee Ordinance, and the Valley County Donley Rural Fire Protection District Intergovernmental Agreement and Joint Powers Agreement for the collection and expenditure of development impact fees for fire protection district system improvements, and providing for the establishment of the Valley County Donley Rural Fire Protection District Development Impact Fee Capital. District Development Impact Fee Capital Projects Trust Fund and its administration and providing for the fire district budget process for expenditure of funds from the Valley County Donley Rural Fire Protection District Development Impact Fee Capital Projects Fund and providing for and establishing the office and duties of the District Administrator and providing for the annual audit of each development impact fee capital projects trust fund established by the district.
Removed and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then in the last big, that one, that moves you out and then puts Donley up here.
He just needed to transfer.
We'll transfer to call.
We good, Bill?
Musical chairs.
You're doing fabulous. Great.
Musical chairs. Right, and our first I, action item is consideration of the McCall Fire District Impact Fee Study and Capital Improvement Plan, which we adopted on August 10th, 2022 as Resolution twenty-two, twenty-two dash five, so that portion was done last year.
Dash five?
Yes, twenty-two, twenty-two dash five was on August 10th, 2022.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for putting that on the record.
Thanks for your notes, Bill. So our second item of business is the consideration of adoption of our, the intergovernmental agreement and joint powers agreement between the McCall Fire Protection District and Valley County, and that would be Resolution twenty-two, twenty-three dash eleven.
I would move that we adopt Resolution twenty-two, twenty-three dash eleven as written.
Okay, we have a motion to approve twenty-two, twenty-three dash eleven. Do we have any further discussion?
Do you have a second?
No, we're not doing seconds.
Chairman, give us a second.
Second. I love, Bill and I are gonna have a conversation later about Robert's roles. So we have, sorry. Totally lost, yeah. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And our third order of business is the, is consideration of the adoption of, sorry, our, to amend our McCall Fire Protection District's policy code in addition to Title twenty-five, our McCall Fire Protection, Protection District and Valley County Development Impact Fee Policy. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-two, twenty-three dash twelve.
I would move we adopt Resolution twenty-two, twenty-three dash twelve.
Motion and second, all those, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting twenty-two, twenty-three dash twelve, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So I will hereby adjourn all of the joint meetings and of the Fire Protection Districts and turn the meeting back over to the Valley, Valley County Commissioners.
Great job, everyone, great job. So just for clarification for everyone, I'm assuming, Bill, that the policy starts today or impact?
Well, their policies will go into effect today. Your resolutions are the ordinance does not go into effect until thirty days after it's approved, and that's by statute. And so the impact fee, collection thereof and so on would not commence until thirty days after today.
Which is gonna be what?
November sixteenth.
November sixteenth?
Does the publication date of the ordinance have anything to do with it, Bill, or is just thirty days?
No, we, excuse me, I'm sorry. It's published in that thirty day period. This is a little bit of a difference than we have with most ordinances. The development impact fee law is very specific about the, the ordinance doesn't, but it goes into effect on the thirtieth day, so we publish in between.
Send to, go ahead.
So I'll make sure I get that published, but my question is if we have building permit applications prior to today or prior to that publishing, do we impose that impact fee or do we have?
No.
Nothing.
You don't have ordinance authority to do so.
Until thirty days from now, and any application received up until thirty days from now does not have to pay the impact fee, correct?
I would say when it's issued, when do you, when do you collect your fees? If you collect the fees at the time the application's made, I just follow that format.
We don't. We collect the fee when they pick up the building permit. It might take weeks to get a building permit through the process. Annette, do we need to put a workshop?
Then when it goes into effect, as I remember the way the ordinance reads, it's when they, when they get a building permit, that's when the fee is due, so I would say that would be charged then.
Well, that makes sense so that it's, okay.
Annette, will you ask Doug or Gabby to put it on in a couple of weeks? We'll do a full workshop, make sure we have this dialed.
And that, that's the process that, Annette, and what we're gonna try and devise to use to collect the funds for you guys, where the money's gonna go, whether it's sent out quarterly, monthly, we haven't worked all those details out yet.
I think there was an agreement with the fire departments to turn it over with their tax turnover, which would be a monthly basis.
On the monthly basis?
Yes, but we can have a workshop to finalize and make sure that that is accepted by all the fire districts.
The other thing for discussion is, Annette, is concerned the building department's gonna be the one that takes all the heat on this, and my recommendation is, is that each fire department has someone that some, that individuals can contact to find out how your plan is going to be implemented and what these funds are gonna be used for. So if you would provide us.
That'll be their administrators, and they will appoint the administrators of the impact fees, and that's part of the policy that, that they've approved, and I think that's the way it'll work. I will also advise you that I will be supplying them all with the forms, so if somebody requests a special assessment, if they request a credit against impact fees, if they request an exemption, if they request a refund, all those sort of things, these fire districts, which we can supply a copy to your building department, so those applications are there, those are, will be ready for them so that if somebody makes any of those requests, we have application forms that, that can administer that process, and the initial decision on those will be made by the administrator of the fire district of the impact fees. They don't like the administrator's opinion or decision, then it goes first appeal to the Board of Commissioners, the fire district, and they don't like the answer there, then it goes to you folks as the county commissioner. So the building, your building official doesn't have to rule on any of that. That's, if there's an issue over any of that, that was referred to the fire district adminis, uh, impact fee administrator.
So Bill, in, in stating that, that's what I'm trying to get to with the workshop. So what I just heard you say is they come in, they are going to apply for their building permit. If they don't like the answer of whatever fee is involved, we send them back to the fire department for resolution. If there is an amendment or any kind of a waiver, they will bring back a corrected form to us in order to acquire those funds.
You're, you're correct.
Okay, I think also, as, as someone comes in though, if they are, you know, if, if they are upset, then we should have those administrators' phone numbers or a way to contact each one of the administrators on our file. We'll just give people a paper, this is where you're gonna be contacting, so that our building department doesn't have to answer any questions about this fee. This is their, just the collection agency, they're not the ones that are going to be resolving individual conflicts.
That's correct.
So if you guys would get us whoever your administrators are so that we have contact information for our building department, that would be helpful.
And you guys are certainly work, welcome to attend the workshop where we're trying to set all this up, maybe your Pam or one of your tracers or whatever, just so everybody's on the same page. Okay? And there being nothing else, I guess I have one more question for Bill, just because I'm interested. What is the flag on your wall behind you?
That is, I think, one of the prettiest flags in the world. It is quite colorful, and it is the Kingdom of Iswatinie, which is the new name as of April 2018 for what used to be known as Swaziland, which is surrounded by the Union of South Africa and was a British protectorate until it gained independence. And I didn't realize the name had been changed until the mayor of Ketchum, who is from Zimbabwe, told me that it's no longer Swaziland.
Interesting, well, it's a beautiful flag.
Isn't that pretty?
Yep.
Yep. That's a gorgeous flag.
You know, one of these days, well, if I have a meeting, I'll put Keribati up there. It's another one that's quite colorful.
That'd be great, that'd be great. All right, thank you for your help, appreciate it.
Well, thank you, and thank you, Douglas, for all your cooperation and all the commissioners today. You folks did, I think, a fabulous job of a complicated bunch of hearings, running a bunch of board meetings at the same time, but the advantage to this process in my mind is that you know this process is completed and we don't have a lot of lingering things out there, well, did this board pass this, did that board pass that, so on and so forth. So my congratulations to all of you and my thanks for all the cooperation I know that my clients have received and I have received from the county.
And we did it in about thirty-five minutes.
Not bad.
We have the rest of the afternoon off, so. We have an executive later, but thank you guys for coming. We're on the right trail, have a great day.
Thank you, commissioners. Bye-bye.
I just reached out to Mike to ask whoever is up if they can start early. Does.
Can we mute for right now?
Yeah, mute, why don't you mute?
Yeah, mute, why don't you mute this?